...intention to discuss the view and the other subject on the alternative expenditure limitation, also known as home rule. On the motion, please.
So, rule.
Second. Ladies and gentlemen, the discussion will move into the hearing and gives the further order to Jay Carter.
Okay, so we had a public hearing last Tuesday and there were no comments from the public. So this will be our second hearing and for those that were here at the first hearing, I want to explain the home rule option a little bit. In 1980, Arizona voters established a constitutional expenditure limitation for cities and towns. The state of post limitation is calculated from a formula using expenses of local revenues for the year, this will be year of 1979 to 1980, as a baseline for the limitation. Even though the state's formula is adjusted annually for inflation and population growth, it does not include any adjustments for increases in types of services that we come up with in the city. The alternate expenditure limitation, also known as the home rule, allows the city council to adopt a budget annually in the amount the city requires to provide the full range of existing services to its residents. If voters do not renew home rule, the city will be required to begin operating under the state imposed expenditure limitation from 1980. Regardless of the actual revenue that is collecting or that we collect, the city would have to wait a minimum of two years to ask for another vote at home rule. However, with the approval of the home rule option, the city will be able to utilize the expenditure for all local budgetary purposes, including the general fund, public safety, which is your fire and your police, streets, maintenance, sanitation, water, wastewater and tourism and capital projects. The amount of revenue estimated to be available to fund the operation of City of Tombstone for the 2526 budget is approximately 12.2 million. If it were not to pass, the state imposed the amount would be 8.2 million. That would result in a budget shortfall for 2526, about $4 million. Just an FYI for anybody out there, the home rule will not impact taxes. This is purely a budgetary measure that will allow the city council to set the annual budget instead of the state budget. And so if there's anybody in the public that would like to make a comment in favor or opposed, you're welcome to do so now.
Okay, anybody have any questions or anything on the home rule?
I'd like to just come with comments. The voters who have seen the last one, who's coming up for vote. And basically, the citizens of the town do not fully understand why they just have to raise their pocket taxes. It's not a course. And I think you can have a favor and a chance we have to explain to them why they need to vote against it.
Okay, go ahead and then I'll put my question in there.
My name is Lily Anne Ritz. I'm at the...
Can you say that, Mike? Hold on.
There's a black one in there.
There's a black one. There you go.
My name is Lily Anne Ritz. I'm 114 Escondida. I have a question related to what you were discussing about home rule. Last meeting, this city attorney, her comment was, we'll have to reduce the police and the fireworks. But you just expressed a $4 million deficit if we do not pass the home rule during the election in a federal. What exactly does the city have to look at in terms of other things that can be caught to that $4 million if it doesn't pass? That's one question. But my other question is, she also mentioned that it's always passed. So I'm wondering, is there a year when it did not pass?
So your first question is about other resources that we could cut. That is true. You could cut other resources that also affects your enterprises, which is your water, your wastewater, your sanitation. That would affect our street. Police and fire, also the city workers, hanging to maintain the roads. It would give these deficits to us. The second part of that question, there was a family just there that said that it did not pass, but it passed. How did we miss the deadline to put in the home rule? I believe that's still time that...
I mean, I mean, I understand the logic. The reason for the home rule is our revenue sharing is based on our population. And our population keeps our budget down way down. And I think what the city attorney was trying to explain last week was that if we don't have the home rule or the expenditure, then we could not, we may, would probably have to get back in the workforce in other areas. I'll tell you two examples. And I won't mention the mayor's names, but two times since 2000 when I was the mayor, there was two members that came in and failed to do the home rule. One cost us $40,000 in fines. And the other one was about almost $50,000 in fines. And I dealt with one of them, strong right hand, and I'm not sure who that is. But anyway, I think about anyone. Dealt with another, but the one I dealt with is, I went to Peneys, the city attorney in there, and the county and I went to Peneys, the city attorney, attorney general's office and the office of the mayor's office to try to negotiate some kind of deal to get the City of Tombstone out of this big fine. They pretty much totally didn't come out of the office. They said, this is the first time that the City of Tombstone has done that. If you don't pass the home rule, you're not going to be able to. And you can't go over that budget. And that's just as simple as that.
Was the fine for going over the budget?
I'm sorry?
Because you said there were fines.
Yeah, that's the fine for going over the budget.
Over the budget, okay.
And actually, it wasn't going over our budgets. We, we, they had budgeted. And I'm not sure what exact number it was, but they had budgeted, but when they budgeted, it was like $40,000, $50,000 shortfall upon the budget with an hour's delay. So that's one of the reasons.
Just like you mentioned, I'm 13 separate. Just like you for clarification, I think that I heard that you're 12.1 million or so. So I mean, it really would be about one third cut than if we alter insurmountable, I guess. I'm just trying to contest the change. I mean, it's hard for me to envision how you would cut a third of the service. It's more of like that I would get figured from.
I'm not sure.
Well, if we fail to pass the home rule, we would be capped at, I think it was 8.2 million. So that's roughly, it was roughly a third.
Capped, yeah.
I guess I'm saying, that would also be...
Very true, right.
That would be a period of, we had insurmountable parts, repairs, services, even over above law of fire and medical. But, okay.
And that's my, that's my, the mayor quote, and regardless, that's correct, but we should kind of see past the word that this would be devastating for our council, especially since we have increased the budget because of our revenue. We've got additional revenues coming in, we have grants, various other sources of that commission. And if we were not able to do it with the home rule, we're going to be in danger.
And also, Mayor, just like you mentioned, Mayor Cortez mentioned, there were, there's a process to the home rule. So there will be listening packets that will be, probably run out in October, that explains everything, like a home rule one on one. So that way voters know before going to the polls what it means.
So isn't our actual working budget, excluding grants, that we're able to get closer to like five million or so?
This one that we have, this one that we have right now was three. 3.2 in the general fund and 16 mil overall.
So we're in the, like 13 million grants that we want to get.
Correct.
So isn't the more actors and better rates explaining on the rule, is it, so if it didn't pass, there would be no kind of services because we have, you know, an 8 million budget? Or after, if our realistic budget is 3, 3 million, something like that, 5, 8 million is the plan, everyone, but if it didn't pass, it would eliminate the opportunity to take the grants for 4 million.
But it doesn't, and to expand on that, it doesn't allow you to, it's not like we would have to trust or, because our revenue sharing, and the money that we get in would be, would be also a lot of, or trying to keep the, probably first home, and all of the, 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 we couldn't do it without going over budget. So we're at that.
Room is showing, yes, so that's...
Right.
So that's not part of the 3 and a half percent of the...
Correct.
Right.
Could you...
If I push it down.
If it's great, is it on?
Yes, maybe if I push the light down a little bit.
Maybe, yeah, just clarification question. So this will come up in the November budget. Will it be a proposition? Will it be, will there be anything that identifies it?
Yes, yes, there will be a proposition number usually with the home rule. But it's that there's a whole process within, like every city and town does. And every city and town in Arizona has to go through this process. It's not just two. So we're going to, we're going to have the listening packets go out by October.
So we really need to make sure that our residents know that in Tombstone proper, that just because you vote in July, does not mean that you should not vote in November for any type of city...
The venue to that, the venue to that, the street, not really, is that this is the general election for presidential and also government, it's in, our votes are going to be counted now. So historically, and that's why we, we've kind of said that it works the same as in the general election for president, governor, or the governor. Big, big deal, not true.
Right, there is still one, and I'm sure you would agree as well, with this and clerk, that just because our city business is taking care of it in July, that we don't want this to be overlooked on the general ballot in November.
That's why social media needs to help us get the word out that we need to pass.
Gotcha, thank you. Oh, I'm Marjorie Lynn. Cortez.
Anybody else have any comments or examples? On that, the motion opposed, the public area of the, uh, the, 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 the budget for the, uh...
Let's let me jam on.
Hi, I'm Marjorie Lynn.
Second. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll say, uh, I propose that the public area not moving to the after motion, moving to the third budget work session. Uh, I'll have a vote for the third, for the group, for the second, ladies and gentlemen. On the favor, I, this is presentation of revised statute, statute of the fiscal 2024 or 2025, and city clerk is going to be presented.
Okay, so this is our third budget work session. We generally have about two. The specific changes have been made for mine to me, such as include, we included all the grants. So last session, we did not have a grasp on what was still pending. So this includes all that. So thank you, TMO, for working with us in the process. I really appreciate that. Also, million dollar placeholder was implemented for future grants that TMO and Fire are actually outgoing for now. So that way, most of our no matches, usually no match, but we have to extend the funds first and then get reimbursed. So we have to have a placeholder there. We updated the 64th fund line, which is the building maintenance line, with corrections that we talked about the last one in session. Salaries were adjusted based on the core benefits, will be adjusted based on the core benefits tomorrow. We have a long meeting with a new worker tomorrow, which that company has saved us already $50,000. The general fund is set at 10.5 million. The overall budget is about 16.5 to include all enterprise, grant and revenues. This budget will get for adoption tonight, and that is not to exceed the 16.5 million dollars. I also wanted to make a comment on the salaries. There's a misconception out there about our salaries, and I want to put this up here in the budget work session, because the salaries that we all have include a 5, a 4.5 increase across the board. And that's for cost of living and minimum wage increase, which will not take effect until January. It is also inflated with the amounts for everybody to include the possibility of overtime costs, workers' comp, Medicare, pension, all insurance benefits, and for those that have uniform tool allowances. The salaries, those were the questions last time, I think Councilman Folt, about how we get salaries to where they're at, or how do we justify the salaries based on population I believe with the Mr. Folt that you had. We don't do a metric on population and our employees' salaries. What we do go off of is the Arizona Leagues and Towns Salary Survey. And it gets everybody within the whole state of Arizona, whatever everybody is making, and I can provide that to all the council. We're right in line pretty much with everybody that is in this area. However, the numbers that were told to serious technical, those were from a budget that the previous finance director had kind of inflated all the way across. And it is sending that story that we are still in the work process. So I just want to make it clear out to the public that all those salaries are really inflated, and that's to include all the benefits of the employees who are taking the benefits or any overtimes or any increases. With the meeting tomorrow that we're going to have, we will have a better grasp of who's taking benefits and those salaries will start to go down. So that's the explanation for the salaries, since it's already out on social media now.
Do you want to push them out or wait for some more?
You, I'm actually, I'm the one who hasn't used the budget. So since the last device.
So I have any individual salary, just the total. The question I have, I was to comment on this budget this year, was looking at some of the other cities. So the, the initial question, that essentially had a per cap, if I per course in the cities, there's going to be a salary equation. So those are totals from our budgets, including all the benefits, we may go off from 1,200 or so to 1,400 per capita. Two from the new budget were 10,400. Somebody suggested something, looking at also the percentage of total budgets of that today. And world class, basically, it depends on like 64 to 67% of their general fund revenue is spent on salaries, but on budget here, which is 9%, which is still 20% more than that. And I, and I listen, I'll use the per capita, and so I look at this like, it's not, I'm not understanding, and it's not a per apartment or per position thing, it just seems like we're spending. But it's not, it doesn't seem like we are spending this huge amount more than the cities on salaries.
Let me, let me say something. Two times seven a year, because we have 1,200 people live here. However, we have a half million visitors a year. A half million visitors a year equates to about a population of 30,000. And you, you can go anywhere and look up the equation, that's why it is, we have to take care of, our industry has to take care of, by running half million people here. We can't do it without. It costs money to do it. I've been in 25 years now, and we've tried nickel and dime, and it's better to take good money than to give good people. That's all.
And I also just want to take back what Mr. Folt, Councilman Folt, for like just positions, I add a salary here from the 2024 local salary benefit survey from the league of areas in cities and towns. Then, I'm just going to use me as an example for a city clerk. Benson, the add starting wages for a city clerk is 61,000 to 102,000. Basically, city clerk starts off at 44,000, a cap of 72. Wichita City starts off at 41, with a cap of 80. And then they have Tombstone, 62,460. That's the difference, what's being said in C. So we're right in line with everything, it's just, you have to vote the salary wages, and I can do what happened here with this. We also have to remember that I'm not just a clerk, city manager, finance director, marketing manager. We all wear several hats, and that's what was, the mayor said, we're all unique. We, you would pay all these people to do this job, and we have two people, which is myself and Deputy Clerk Shelley Kenson.
Can I, I don't pick out any individual salaries on, or any of that, but it is a total across the board, it's going to be so much more than our cities. And I understand, based on two areas, you know, basically, that's a substantial amount of tourism, that it brings some people to, that's, that's going on, that brings some people, um, who mount south or, that's, that's, and, uh, a little outside, cities, more trucks out, and they're wanting tourists, and that's, so they're already, more people than other two.
That's basically what I heard, I mean, a lot of times, too.
In this case, is there any more questions that you guys have on the budget? Like I said, it's up for adoption tonight, and so it could be for attended, and you just can't see over 60.5 million, and there is a difference.
So on the, uh, page 13, so water, um, actual revenues were over 561,000. So the budget revenue was 7, 27,000. So why would we change the new projected revenue to 750,000? Where is that 200, probably 200,000 in the account?
What do you think?
That's very...
Councilman Folt, can you speak louder into the microphone?
I will try.
Thank you.
My home rule.
I'm sorry, you're saying that it is expected 2,000,000, my rule is 100?
No, so they, uh, the water, um, actual revenue is in 2023.
What are you proposing? I'm curious, what's this all waiting for? Are you ones to take and reduce it, or what are you proposing?
I'm trying to do my job. I have a job, the budget is in place, and I'm saying yes.
I understand, and I'm asking, what are you proposing? Comment your doubt, what are you proposing?
I understand.
And what are you proposing? I'm asking you, what are you proposing?
That I understand.
How much do you need to solve?
Uh, proposals that you have numbers on there, they're actual, they're actually working. You got 561,000 was the actual revenue. The budget shows 727,000. So it's way under budget, but we're going to raise this projected revenue, that has to come from somewhere.
It's coming from the government, so...
So we're going to raise the water...
Raise the water, raise, we have to raise all of the enterprise funds, the enterprise general fund has been offset for too many years, and it's time to catch it up. Unfortunately, I don't want to do it by this minute, but within the next three months, we're going to be doing studies and changing all of our links, sewer rate, permit pickup. We're paying, for example, we're paying waste management for 750 pickups. And they're only, they're only paying us for 500. They're not dollars, we don't, they're not picking up as many people as they say they are, and we're having, we're further on and having to eat the difference, and it's about 50, 60 thousand dollars a year. And there's a lot of areas that are in the enterprise funds that have to be covered, and if we don't budget for it in this budget, then we can't really get to line during the next fiscal year. So the idea is to budget for it, and over the next three to six months, start making the adjustments. By the time we get to the next fiscal, fiscal year, then we will, then we will have the revenues coming from the enterprise funds that actually pays for themselves and not have to take it out of the town's fund. Literally, what, what should be done is every time you pay a dollar out of the general fund because of something on the enterprise fund, it should be considered as a loan. And we did that for years. And then when I say, no, we have 2 million dollars and 10 million on that, or you watch us, and I remember what's in, I think the economy says, just, just try to fix it. As we've been, we have been trying to fix it for a long time, and that's where the problem is. It's in the, it's in the enterprise funds, not generating enough money. And a lot of it is because people don't want to raise the water, they don't want to raise the government rates, they don't want, they don't want to raise these rates, pay for what it actually costs us to do. And what, what it actually costs us, that 7 million dollars, that's where we're at. And we, we've got one year to have to be replaced to, 100 years old, we've got all kinds of pipes that break a day, and we've got to cut down here, just in the road, for all of state, multiple ways to make a city for us. So I mean, it's, it's a challenge to do it so much, but that's, that's what, okay, now, I'll, I should, we can move on here next slide.
Well, so I don't have a good, did the water raise, does that have to be reported public, or is it still on this?
Not sure. It probably be done right away.
Why wasn't the, I think the problem about that, it's on the house, but, curious for the, that was...
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to point to you, but I would say that we have to, we have to, we have to work on the, the financing now, so...
And unfortunately, this budget was, as you know, that I, that we had the first session...
These folks got the, the budget done in their lap, right at the end of it, and then I think they're now standing up together.
And you have to be separate dates that are coming new fast, so I wish we would have more time on this, if you must. And what that means, and I want to thank my Deputy Clerk Shelley for working so hard to get this budget balanced. She's put so many hours, we've been building it from scratch. It is in a different format, it is neutral reading. I want to tell you that we're also making changes within our department heads, they're more responsible for their budget. So what we did is we ended up implementing a live, a real time report, or they can go online for Castella or American software. So Marshall office can go on, they can see what the budget is in real time, and if we put an invoice in, it will take it off right then and there, so they're always on top of it. Right, they didn't have those tools before. And so, and I'm also making them be a part of the budget process. They were never a part of it before. So there are some changes being made, and I'm hoping by next fiscal year, we have a better grasp on the new way of conditions.
Are you taking questions from the public or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Do I have to repeat my name and address? Lily Anne Ritz, Escondida.
Turn, turn the microphone.
It is...
It is.
Okay. So I'm a little confused on the bridge. You use the term enterprise, and I don't exactly that encompasses. And then you said you borrow from the general fund and you put into the enterprise to cover the expenses. So I'm trying to understand what all that is. But I guess my biggest question has to do with, how can we afford to give employees a pay raise when we're going to then tax the citizens during inflationary time? I'm not saying they don't deserve a raise, okay? Clarification, you do deserve that raise, I'm not saying you don't. But as a business owner, I'm doing the same sorts of things with my own budget, and I got to tell you, it's really tight. The happily, um, happily, and tourism, people coming through, sure aren't spending a dollar each in everybody's business, and I'm sure other businesses are struggling like mine. And the first thing I'm looking at cutting are all of those major expenses. I can't cut off my water, I can't cut off my electricity, but I'm looking at cutting my hours at the store, so that I don't have an expensive payroll. And I stopped purchasing any new inventory, I don't purchase any new inventory. And I just did a great big sale on all of my merchandise, just so that I can get some cash for winter. So I, I guess, one is I don't understand the bridge, and two, I don't understand the logic that we're going to pay somebody and, and, you know, increase our budget, and as Councilman Folt mentioned, is 80% versus other cities that aren't, are, are meandering in those comparisons in terms of what increases those other employees are getting. I'm not saying you don't deserve a raise, or maybe it doesn't need to be as big. I know for inching on that potential minimum wage of $12... Not saying you don't deserve a raise, or maybe it doesn't need to be as big, I know per inch on that potential minimum pay due to dollars. But I'm going to tell you then, the biggest fear I have is where is the money going to come from? Because my business will close, I'm a fat parent and I know how much I contributed into, to the city. That's going to have to be reduced from the budget and if I'm, if I'm not the only one, how much more will have to be reduced? So I guess there's a lot of questions that I have, but I'm not sure how to be answered in the meeting, but maybe you might sit down and have a chat sometime.
Thank you. Sure, so as far as the, um, the salary raises, as I mentioned before, those are included in working documents, we have to include those. I'm not getting them right on the whole race, I'm not getting that good race. Um, this is just with everything included. Uh, our enterprise funds come from, uh, your, it's blue health, uh, the water sanitation, anything that we know customers for. Um, those rates have not been increased, let's say over ten years, maybe no longer. And we are short haul and everything because the general fund is taking it over, um, so we don't give that to the customer. But every town I have looked at, including and some in this, we have looked at our findings and our budget, um, since the dismissal of our, uh, finance director. They're all are recommending to have an increase in our things because we're, we're very ready to do that.
So my, my question is, as a resident, it feels like I'm being punished. My rates are going to go up because if this is just the way I feel, due diligence wasn't done. So my water bill is going to go up, my, that's my fee will go up and I'm sorry, remember, we're giving a paper, isn't it? I feel like the first place that should be cut is that it should be government spending and I don't mean that disrespect for them, but you know, when, when I do my own budget. I have a lot of buying new things and you, you see what I'm saying? And I'm not being contentious, I'm just.
I, 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 I don't want to stand up until you review the file.
Okay. Just wanted to, um.
Is there an estimate of what those rates need to be raised? I have that in my household, sorry, it looks like between my other question and sanitation, I have a lot of, but you have water and sanitation, those are the total of like four hundred thousand, I'd say, if you estimate a thousand households, that's like four hundred households, I understand all that, my, my household, you know, through the most important, you know, sanitation and water as well. But is there an estimate of what those?
There is not an estimate, but we have to do a whole raise step, it is a whole process, we can't just go out and start raising people's rates and ten months more and one month, there's a whole process that happens, um, and we'll get an outside company to do that.
All right, any further questions? You have more?
Yes, on the, so the first thing, sales tax. Well, to make sure, um, so sales tax, uh, last year, twenty two and twenty three was, came on about almost a hundred thousand, a hundred budget. This year, it was to be a way of counting, and year to date, it's a minimum eighty, it says estimated, but you have three hundred forty eight thousand, I'm not sure about that. Square for the whole year, they admitted when June was, uh, receipts almost there, reflected on their ledger, but, um, how in the budget are we, the estimate of sales tax is going to go up on this transition, is there any, how, what does that, what's that?
I'm going to be honest, I officially have these rates for the state of Arizona, um, they give us proposed numbers and so that's what she had looked at, I mean, like I said, it's still working documents, so.
So state is showing a lot of.
And that's something to share with us as well. Any other questions?
All right, anybody, from the council, any question? Any comments? Okay, I'm proposing to close the, the President's first section and. Close the papers. So, one, the main section, proposing now, also during the meeting. All right.
What time do you have? If you don't want to ask me.
Six thirty six.
You got it. Ten minutes. I'm not leaving this on, don't say anything, you don't want anyone to know that.
Yeah, I, I got your emails, but.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah.
Looking forward to a lively report tonight. We love your, yes, we love, we love your, uh, stories.
That's just the fact.
Just the fact.
Yeah.
Drag net.
Tell it before my time is full.
Marshall Adams, you're not starting yet, are you?
Oh, no.
Oh. The other day, one of my family members said, hey, will you go to Circle K and it was at night, like about nine o'clock and go get me X, Y, Z and that's what I went and I said, oh, no.
Circle K at nine o'clock at night?
No, you don't go after dark by yourself, no. It's like Tucson used to be, you don't go out after dark, no, now it's just don't go at all. Me too, I was born and raised there. I can't disclose that, he'll probably laugh at me. Well, where did you go? Cause it's recording. What year did you graduate? Project Moore, four forty South Park Avenue, class of nineteen eighty two.
San Marino, class of nineteen eighty four.
Hmm. Okay, so you know where that's at? Probably not.
I know, I know it was in Mid Heart Town.
Yeah. It, it's like, we, we consider it Montessori at this point, but it was like going to college for high school. Yeah, I had, I had, I had, I had no bells, we went block schedules. Do you remember back in the day when you could have a gun rack in the back of your truck?
I remember those days.
Yeah, yeah, crazy. Yeah. I used to babysit for my principal. Hi, Marshall Adams, you're looking great. A little chit chat there. Okay. Enough of that?
To flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Reagan.
Present.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Present.
Commissioner Falk.
Present.
Commissioner Bowers.
Present.
Vice Chairman Adams.
Present.
Chairman Esco.
Present. May fourteen, twenty twenty four, the senior vice chairman of the district, who approves.
Second.
May the second, we have a discussion on the minutes. And a note discussion, a note discussion in honor of favor.
I.
One security. Next item is the marshal's report, the marshal will report on the May first, twenty twenty four, and the May third, twenty twenty four. Marshal's report is on here.
Thank you. Thank you. Totally, it was like. All right, this is mayor, members of council, I'm speaking to citizens, fire chief, city clerk, I'm based in White, I agree. Crime report from May twenty twenty four. May we add one hundred and seventy nine total incidents, one hundred thirty eight traffic stops, six hundred legal accidents, one with injuries and three DUIs. Number of calls to service without compared to April, we have one hundred forty four total incidents. Global trends, smoke levels. Reserve hours, reserve duties for extending seven hours and minutes for salaries paid used in cities of one thousand five hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. Our reserve sergeant, who was also lieutenant at the Department of Corrections, has since retired from there. He is presently employed at the visiting police department, so he is a resident of his preserved duties here after ninety, after nine years of service. Uh, he was very much appreciated and he wishes us the fortunes in his new endeavor. Tip for last. According to lieutenant there, the management and cost of all apartments reportedly made the entire construction crew vanish. Next section, animal disbehavior. Next section, animal disbehavior. A pair of marathoners were walking highway eight here, landed in parts, they were recently found, but their owner, they spent the night in a parking lot, uh, everyone's took them over to the back. A large white dog, a pointy-nosed and spots, climbed over the fence and got out. Dog climbed back over the fence when the tops were flying. Picture reported by the police officers in their yard about, quote, dumb pigs, end quote, and quote, volunteer slime, end quote. No actual livestock or harm in this event. Many here were hit by cars last month, so please watch out for them. Significant investigation. DUI. Underage driver had alcohol in his system. Uh, if you are the lord of the age of twenty-one, any alcohol in your system at all is violation. You will be charged accordingly once the initial blood results come back. DUI. Another underage driver left at graduation party with two other persons who were intoxicated while on race. Free date for charging, investigation into the adults who drive at the party location continues. And then somebody called later stated that another person at the party, you're late nine o'clock. DUI drugs. One of our deputies noted a copious amount of deceptive behavior with the hotbeds of a vehicle on a tractor side. K nine Q was employed and ordered to the car. Had four fed bell bells, twenty-three grams of meth, drug camera down there, and a loaded three fifty-seven light revolver located inside. The driver was enjoying drugs, the passenger was a convicted felon, and the guy in the backseat had multiple drugs. They went to jail on the three-point timeline. Drugs again. Driver was known suspended license by a deputy who recognized her. K nine Q ordered to the car, death pies were as numerous were found, and corporate flag nations were issued. And still more worse. Traffic stopped speeding through the attention of our deputy. K nine Q again, alerted to the car, and four point six grams of meth was discovered. Both women stayed in bed while incarcerated. They literally homecoming after two days. Full in vehicle pursuit. Uh, license plate, your cameras picked up on this car, and they tried to get technically stop it, but it's what, do you get out of traffic? The pursuit was coming in. Pursuit, coach's kind of share stuff and said pursuit coming our way, so we can watch by spiking all four corners. The driver pushed the car right off, not to be seen again, should be a long, long, long time. Pursuit. Twenty-one-year-old man from Mesa named Prince Charles. Left the border patrol who lost him. He then came to Tombstone and he chased him, but he got away because the car's deputy was driving couldn't keep up. That's more than that. Benson then tried to spike him, but they were unsuccessful. CCA still not a guy on nine, nine-ten. He also had a working hand gun, he not working. Pursuit. One night, roundabout chase, and it was a car that spiked and was invaded. Seventeen-year-old Mexican male suspect drove repeatedly, was in the face of uncalmed traffic despite requests, both two illegal immigrants and a car witness to stop. He was charged with multiple felony counts and was put into jail as an adult. Smudgling. And listen to the better places that these people came from. Smudgling, twenty-year-old from Rhode Island, got caught transporting undocumented citizens that he was in need of, he paid for. He was so disturbed, which I was recording. Smudgling, twenty-eight-year-old figure from Florida, ran into a car, picked up some undocumented hitchhikers, got his order to hide a number of luggage in his backseat, and then he called the backup. He went to jail. Smudgling, twenty-three-year-old man from Alabama, got caught with five DAs, he went to jail. Smudgling, twenty-two-year-old man from Mexico, got caught with two, two DAs. Door Patrol took custody of all three suspects. Smudgling, fifty-six-year-old man from Phoenix, um, a heart condition, got caught in traffic with three immigrants, and he then suffered as a case of incarceritis, and went to the hospital in an ambulance. There's charges that we wait for him when he gets out, his car will not. Smudgling, a dirty girl woman from Nevada, had two immigrants in her backseat and two more in the trunk. She went to jail. Smudgling, Elvis, live well and in custody. A thirty-four-year-old man named Elvis from California, said he drove all the way here to pick up his friends' uncles and drive them to Phoenix. How long a story? He got away. Smudgling, twenty-seven-year-old man from New Mexico, said he met a man on the crime report app. If you do not know what that is, please do not look it up on your cell phone, or you're gonna have a water-based placement to do with your stuffs. He was observed driving twenty miles an hour in a sixty-five mile an hour zone, he had three immigrants in the back, and he went to jail. He called a few days later saying that the cartel was threatening him, thought he should have chosen more reputable and worthy. Tombstone now has four smuggling cases accepted for prosecution in the Sierra Police Department, which is the largest city in virtue channels, Douglas Police Department, which sits at international order, and Benson, Bisbee, Walcox, the Chupacito Police Department, DDA, and Homeland Security combined. This is not a discouraging remark regarding the other agencies, but more testament to the quality of this traffic that comes to Tombstone and our allegiance in your day.
Well done.
Lot, lot of, part of the good work of the true solid, they didn't have their name.
As their leader.
Thank you, thank you. A local man, known as Dan from Tombstone, oh, sorry, Tucson, I'm in the Ryan River app, I was saying Smudgling, I was. Tucson man named Donald Tussel Stone by invitation, she's been a two next year in town. And then became violent, with his host and cousin about shooting up a school, driving to a table with a firearm, and mentioned a homicide in Tucson. He was criminally charged and his information was forwarded to the proper authorities, and this is exactly why we all attend straight to the same classroom in elementary school. Her three. A local witness managed to grab a backpack from an unlocked car and went off. The suspect tricked, and landed on his face. In the law enforcement business, we call that hard. The backpack is recovered, they block the doors. Three assists DDA's with a roll over accident in Ohio, eight. Three assists, the coach was kind of share stuff, so the score on different, they hit on auto cameras, but they got to first. The driver was arrested and passed, he goes a one-way to Phoenix. And there were forty-four additional assists to other agencies in there. Lost and found, six wallets, four phones, and a pair of briefing licenses. Keep an eye on yourself. Both of us have our entire right, our phone, we can't swing on your credit cards, there's no trick. And other items of interest. Ten plots who struck the door patrol checkpoint in Chupacito last year, that's the reason that it's closed, took a clean, uh, will serve four point five years in prison, and is ordered to pay restitution to rebuild the checkpoint in, uh, one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And, uh, the other cases that happened, the door backs, store backs, those are all my cases. And finally, it will be a full briefing when the money is collected and the funds expended for the Dog Days in Tucson event, and this evening is celebrated. I will say that it was a grand success, and we're very grateful to the many sponsors on behalf of us, the help of countless people who all set aside their differences and gave together to raise funds for our K nine program, as well as provide scholarships for disabled students. Anybody have any questions?
No questions? Once again, very good report, Marshall.
Thank you, sir.
Last motion, they turn the fourth station, no blue, the second. All right, so we have about two minutes, we're going to go ahead and debate. The favorite companies, the special companies, the favorite. I'm sure we have some name companies that you want to know, which are the three, four, one, two.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call.
House of Congress.
Present.
Mayor Probst and Lord.
Present.
Congressman Paul.
Present.
Congressman Bowers.
Present.
Mayor Sipper.
Present.
Next item is called Republican Air, thirty, four, three, one, two, one, off traffic, which is not mandated state council member, so all of the others, experienced, uh, meeting. Except, you can find, ladies and gentlemen, restrictions, and the non-admission, which does the body, not getting access within the jurisdiction of the body. The time of the day, the three members, the speaker, the committee, the committee, the chairman, 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 the Um, people were there with their dogs. It was a very hot day. Um, they brought out some pretty cute costumes and, um, but they, some people had to leave and come back. And so, we, we think we gotta move that up to, to an earlier date. Everybody had a good time. They're cute. So, these are some of our sponsors. I mean, look at the, the town really came out. They really came together to help us. We had three and a half months to put this together. I walked around and talked to everybody that I possibly could. And then there was about one person in town that told me no. Um, without hesitation, in some way, whatever their capacity that they could do, they helped us out. They helped us out with the volunteering. They helped us out financially. They provided some sort of, um, discount during the day. They provided, uh, raffle items for, for raffles. Everybody was super excited and, um, just, they were just phenomenal. So, we also think a lot of these people either volunteered for time or volunteered by us or whatever resources that they had, um, gave us some raffle items. We had, uh, Smokey Bear did his birthday with us. He has foresters with out. Uh, we had Irish Four Pounds. We had people, the Herb came in from California to participate in our event. Uh, lots of people donated things. Momma's Hot Sandwiches donated, uh, sandwiches for all the volunteers, uh, which totaled, I think, forty something sandwiches. Uh, they did veg lunches. Uh, so the, the whole town really did everything that they possibly could. It was super, super amazing and heartwarming. So, we raised ten thousand dollars on a GoFundMe. And Samson, retired mayor, he was my service dog for eight and a half years. He's the reason that I was able to get an education. He was the reason that I was able to recover from a brain injury. Um, he's the reason, am I proud right now? He's the reason that he, uh, he's made my life independent. Um, he retired May first and he has loved, keep loving him from all over the world. And, um, an acquaintance of ours, whose son just recently passed away from cancer, um, earlier this year, who donated all his time to do photographs. He was a photographer, professional photographer. And he donated time to police departments and to rescues, to do calenders. And she contacted me, uh, she lives in Nevada, and asked if she had set this GoFundMe for us. And in less than three weeks, she raised ten thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, add the three hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents in fees, uh, she sends a check for nine thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and forty-six cents. So, you can see the impact that this event had on people literally around the world. So, these are our expenses. Um, we had estimated, we divided six thousand dollars of total expenses for five thousand four hundred eleven dollars and eighteen cents. Um, this is where the expenditures went. Uh, Goose Flash Rabbit, uh, uh, he, he, he did a fabulous job on our logo and our lanyards and all of that. Uh, John along with his screen apparel and all of our T-shirts, which we still have a few left over, uh, for next year's event. And he would, he let us float that, um, until we ended the event, which we wouldn't have been able to pay three thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, because when we started, you had nothing. Um, he also gave us five hundred, he let us give us two fifty, and that's how we started the event. So, uh, thank you to, to everyone, but thank you to John for, for letting us wait to, to send that to him. So, this was, these are our members. I have two pages of income. Uh, we have all of the event, all of the information in this file here. We have all of our minutes from our meetings, which we had multiple meetings. Uh, we have all of the financials. We have canceled checks. We have all of our receipts. Um, this will remain at the Marshall's Office. If anyone would like to take a look at any of these numbers or figures, please make an appointment with, uh, Marshall's them and he will make sure to be able to see these. Uh, we're not obviously releasing them because there's some sensitive information on, on them. But, um, you know, if you have any questions, please make an appointment and this will stay there in the Marshall's Office, uh, for the duration. We do still have some monies trickling in. Whatever trickles in is going to go into the seed fund for next year. Um, this is, uh, the second part of that. As you can see, everyone in town was very generous. And our total raise is twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand six hundred eleven dollars and seven cents. I think that's pretty amazing. This was, uh, our income was twenty-two thousand six hundred eleven dollars and seven cents. Spenders were five thousand four hundred eleven and eighteen. We donated six thousand dollars to the Tombstone Marshall's Office, which you check this version there, and also to the International Life for Ability Science, six thousand dollars. Uh, total remaining seed money to date is five thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Um, one thing I, I do want to add is we, the International Life for Ability Science donates, does scholarships in the spring and the fall every year, fall and spring. And we have, um, historically opened that up just internationally, international students. We've had students from Harvard, MIT, um, you know, multiple, uh, very high-end schools get scholarships from, from us. What we have decided to do because Tombstone was so fantastic and helping us put this together is talk to, um, Principal Thursday. And we're going to be doing a scholarship in the fall and in the spring, just for the Tombstone High School. And, um, we have to adjust our bylaws a little bit to find out exactly how much we're going to be able to donate and how many scholarships we'll be able to provide. But they will be available starting next fall and spring, uh, just for Tombstone High School. They have to be going into a STEM program, which is science, technology, engineering, or mathematics. And, um, they have to be a student, um, who has a disability as a sort. And I'm gonna be going in, um, in the fall and in the spring and talking to the senior class. Be explaining to them how they do, look for scholarships, what resources to look for. And most importantly, how to fill out a personal statement because that is exactly, um, grades, everything are very important. But a personal statement tells a scholarship, uh, payer who you are. And so, I'm going to provide a template for them. And if they have any questions or need some guidance on writing a comprehensive personal statements or writing out a, um, scholarship application time, you're gonna give us something else to announce throughout the year. So, ladies and gentlemen, I, we took some of the improvements we want to make for next year. Uh, we walked around town and talked to all the businesses. They gave us some feedback. Uh, we do want to change, we looked at changing the time to earlier, maybe April, but we have so many events going on. Uh, we don't want to crowd the calendar with events. So, we're gonna probably stick to the same time frame, um, early May, uh, twenty twenty-five. We're gonna change the time of it to nine A.M. to three P.M. It may be two P.M., three P.M. Uh, we have decided, all of this is tentative. But we'd like to pierce more shades, more tenants somehow, um, organize our demos so they're back to back. Uh, we had a head costume contest, which I mentioned earlier. Uh, we're reaching some logistics on the field so that people can hear the announcements, can hear the band a little bit better. Uh, that was one feedback that we had. And things like have more than maybe something along that lines. Um, we want to reduce the price of the T-shirts and the lanyards. And have that an additional, I don't know, maybe it was suggested that we have a tote bag. People can go run the vendors. Um, we would like to organize some sort of dog trial, whether it's a professional dog competition or whether someone suggested an amateur dog competition. Um, so we're going to be looking at all of those options. And, um, Lily has suggested potentially organizing a monthly raffle, uh, with the sponsors. And, you know, that still didn't work, but, uh, I think that's a valuable idea to, to keep you involved all year long. So, I would be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
All I gotta say, I wish every, every event, for example, could do the same thing that you did this. It really takes a lot of effort. Our chief, are you still waiting for a murder? Your third. High side of unattended is fire duty report in the month. Fire, fourth, March, third, twenty-fourth, eighth of April.
Ladies and council, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, started a, uh, one of the main for our fire department report. We have sending a few calls that month. Forty-five were EMS, seven were fires, and six were rescues. I mean, that new jobs in life or, uh, forceful injury, uh, basically out of the vehicle or, uh, or confined space. Uh, the, uh, service calls ended up to be fifteen and lots of those are state rules. And state rules are still going on, uh, today, it's no matter what. Uh, just an update on the Amtry fire. We had a, uh, official five-minute response. And at the moment, we've got toned out to the moment we arrived on scene and just a note, you know, fire science that, uh, big fates emphasize the fire doubles every sixty seconds. Uh, this is why response times are, uh, so important and, uh, as quickly as possible. The trailer as well as the jointing out built was fully involved when we arrived, uh, even with the five-minute response time. We did have the fire knock down within, uh, eleven minutes and, uh, under control. Uh, we saved the fifth wheel, which was about ten feet away. The fifth wheel was a resonance. And so, we were happy to be able to, uh, get that in front of just, uh, a horrible bird, uh, front end to that. So, the nose started, uh, where we, uh, protected and the exposure of it and kept it from catching on fire. Uh, we kept the, the most important part also, which is that we kept the fire from finding that other than, uh, uh, it was windy and also there was a lot of rush and we kept the rush from, uh, burning and also going next door to the council. We had several open hurricane calls and, uh, people were burning large piles of, uh, brush, uh, or construction, uh, products in an unprotected and windy area. Uh, one of the fires was a construction, construction materials from a homeowner that had been burning in an open area with no protection on a very windy, uh, late afternoon or the evening. And apparently the homeowner, uh, did put out the fire and went in town to a restaurant to have dinner. And a neighbor was concerned, called us, uh, on nine oh one. And we, uh, uh, now we put out the fire. The bulk of, uh, the Marshall's Office, uh, when the, uh, that homeowner did come home and we were putting out the fire, uh, the damage selected would have could happen, which, uh, could have ignited the whole area as well as the rushing, the, uh, and propeller from that, from that area. Our department hosted overnight twenty, uh, state of the wild land fire, fires and, uh, hot dog groups that, uh, they were in from the, uh, the fair fire where we had sent, uh, a four thousand gallon team with two firefighters, uh, to, which was out in the state. And we hosted the crew, uh, that, uh, that probably around eleven o'clock at night, uh, to have a dinner night with us. And, uh, we managed to, uh, get twenty of them with their cots and everybody put it down nicely. They wanted to stay for two days, but, uh, unfortunately, uh, they go out on another fire, so they're also in state. So, uh, we wished them well and, uh, some of them helped them get on their way. So, right now, uh, so far the season, with the season, uh, officially, it just be done. Although we all know that wildland season is, uh, twenty-four, uh, seventh, or, uh, year, year round, three sixty-five. So, uh, but we bill for two more fires and we're gonna be receiving, uh, two thousand dollars on the state. These are all mutually fires that, uh, we get requested on and it's either equipment or, or firefighters. Uh, right now, we have these where we're sending both. Uh, the other nice thing about the state is that this year, if we have to send somebody overnight, then the state will, uh, pay for backfilling that position. So, we don't have to pay somebody overtime to come in. The state will be, uh, covering that possibility. We would see six radios from the state ranch, uh, brand-new radios that, uh, we sorely need. Now, we're able to, uh, communicate on several different, uh, tone frequencies that they need. And we, uh, are able to have our own HJ frequency that we can talk on. The, the nice thing about the paperwork that they did for these radios are that, uh, uh, in ten years' time, I mean, we, I signed for them personally. They're like one thousand dollars each, uh, but they're on loan to us more than anything. So, we don't, they won't be officially ours until, for ten years from, uh, the day that we sign for them. And so, uh, that really, I feel helps out a lot of the paperwork with the, uh, the city in accepting that, uh, as far as they're going. And speaking of ranch, we got our, uh, ordered our four-day grant. What that is, is the, uh, uh, ninety-six thousand dollar grant, which we'll be able to get new SCA, air packs. Uh, all of our air packs right now are, I think, of light. And we actually need close to twenty of them, but at least we'll be able to get eight. And the four-day system is, is that we will be able to, in real time, with GPS tracking, track all of our firefighters as they go into a building or into an area, uh, and be able to have the tablets and be able to track where they're at. Uh, and that is near, near to my heart, because I'm from Seattle where I lost, uh, five friends, uh, on the Mary P. Ward house fire. Um, uh, one, one of which I, uh, sat with you day and night as the, uh, in the field for the fire service. She did take the test and, uh, unfortunately Jimmy was part of one of the fires that died that, uh, that night. And problem was is that nobody knew where they were. Nobody knew that they were getting into an area, uh, that, uh, that had a basement that they didn't know. And burned through and a fire came there. And so, I'm very happy to be able to get this grant. It means a lot to me. If you were a part of work, that would part, uh, to be able to get this grant for our folks. So, one of the other things is that, uh, I'm gonna talk about, this is, uh, Jimmy's got his tinfoil hat segment. Uh, and this is, uh, probably one-time-only thing and thank God for this child that, uh, is. It's gonna be the, uh, fitting for the right place, for the right place at the right time. And so, we had a safety toddler for being hit by a car. Uh, this was actually a little bit older, not ago, for transparency, but I forgot to mention it during my last, uh, uh, presentation. Uh, what happened was the toddler we had wandered out on Highway eighty and we were going on, we were on Highway eighty. Just out of the corner of our eye saw a, that looked like a child or we didn't even know. It almost looked like a beach ball that was going the way it was dressed and towards the highway. And we quickly, as we, as we could, turned around and, and punched it. And sure enough, it was a toddler who was right in the middle lane of Highway eighty in a blind curve when a speeding car came around and we managed to cut off the car and, uh, so the car, so that the, uh, the child didn't get, uh, didn't get hit. The, uh, driver of the speeding car slammed on his brakes and screwed that up, laid on his horns, but, uh, the child didn't. So, it's no doubt in my mind that, uh, that that would have, uh, would have been getting, getting dying just by, by time. So, um, as Jim says, it was that person's name. So, uh, just really quick, uh, one of the other things that, uh, I wanted to bring up was our tailway, uh, that we're gonna be doing for the quarter of July. Uh, it's something that we, you know, we wanted to kind of expand. We, we usually do not just, you know, uh, set up parking for folks and have the, uh, the fireworks show. We kind of want to expand it where it's kind of more of a, uh, family park. And so, it's going to be a tailgate where people can bring their coolers and we'll have, you know, more organized spots for people. Uh, blankets out in the infield. Uh, we'll be able to have hot dogs that we're going to be, uh, uh, giving away, uh, in, in taking donations. But, uh, give it away and something that we really wanted to, uh, introduce fireworks, what we've done, I mean, seven years that I've been here as head chief. And I just want to start, uh, And I just want to start our department getting closer to the community. One of the things that we're trying to do is, once they've done all their rich checks and everything else, have done their, their, I don't want to say schoolwork, but their, the work on their certifications. All our people want to, we have a lot of people. And it's something that I don't know if any other expansion and partner has done that, but I just feel that we need to know who, you know, owners of the shop owners are. And get to know them, and get to know people on first-hand basis. And so as part of our, we consider ourselves, everybody's friend, we're Switzerland, and we are, we're conducting our life that way. And I am incredibly lucky to be the fire chief of such an iconic town. And whenever I have friends who come in, rather than take them to Tucson or Desert Museum or whatever, I bring them into downtown Tewstone. And where we can support our community in fire relief events. So without any questions?
Me? So your, your PACs, your devices with the GPS, roughly how much are they a piece? I'm not a math teacher.
They're around fifty thousand a piece.
What is, what is the likelihood of obtaining more grants for additional units?
Good question. We are in the process right now of finding grants for additional, for additional air packs. And the other thing is to take it back on to that, is that we're buying air packs that other towns around the area have MSAs. So we, all the labels are interchangeable. If we have, we have here for an incident, or we go somewhere for an incident, we don't have to have specialty equipment.
Excellent. My other question would be, for your Fourth of July event, if you need volunteers or any items donated, should they contact?
They can contact myself.
Okay.
I want to say contact person, she's so busy, I don't want to do that here.
You can get the contacts email. I know there's some people that are wanting to also donate the hot dogs or whatnot.
Or even their time?
Yeah, or even time, or anything that they would like to. What to also do with this community event is to also have a community side dish table. So if somebody wants to bring in, you know, a special side dish, we're going to have a tent over there. So we have hot dogs, there's some games for the kids, water, time. Yeah, so there'll be a lot of things that anybody has any ideas or anything. This is kind of a new thing that keeps up, but then we, it is great.
I absolutely agree. And then, just the last thing I think I want to do is I want to thank you and your department for saving that little person's life. Thank you.
Thank you, great report. Next item is approval of the minutes. And the ready to accept their actions on approval of the minutes, where they're going to be making the campaign of May fourth, June twenty-fourth, and that's the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made is second, and they're in discussion on the minutes. No discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. I'd be discussing action on approval of the special council meeting for Tuesday, May forty-eighth, twenty twenty-fourth, and that's the motion to approve. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. I have no discussion, no discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. I have seen discussion interaction on approval of the special council meeting for Tuesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-fourth. That's the motion to approve.
Approved.
Second. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. I have no discussion, no discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. Under the business discussion interaction on approval of the council payment, the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. It's May first, twenty twenty-fourth, and that's the period, twenty twenty-fourth. That's the motion to approve. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion on it. I have no discussion, no discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. I'd be discussing interaction on approval of the resolution number zero seven, tax two-dee and two-fourth. A resolution of City of Teweska, the public, and expenditures of alternative expenditure management. That's the motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. I have no discussion, no call.
Councilmember Reagan?
Yes.
Mayor Clay Templeard?
Yes.
Councilmember Faulk?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Sibley?
Yes, motion secured.
I have seen discussion interaction on approval of the resolution number zero eight, tax two-dee and two-fourth. A resolution of Mayor County Council of City of Teweska, County of Arizona, for adoption of the intended budget for City of Teweska, Teweska. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year, adopting the estimated amounts required to make the coverage expenses for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Authorizing direct transportation, the state will be given of the intended budget. That's the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. I have no discussion, no call.
Councilmember Reagan?
Yes.
Mayor Clay Templeard?
Yes.
Councilmember Faulk?
No.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Sibley?
Yes, motion secured.
I'd be discussing interaction on approval of the special use permit for Cambridge and Portale Teweska with Dean Tucker, Patrick, uh, Mr. Curry. I'm not sure how to pronounce that.
Robert Do.
And his Jeep, like, for Kirkman and Teweska on Saturday, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-fourth. And the requesting the following, the use of shut-in off, eighty-five HTV and sound system, or AM, FM, or podcast and presentation. That's the motion to approve.
Approved.
Second. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. I apologize for not being able to pronounce her names. I have no discussion, no call. I have no discussion, no discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. Next in the discussion interaction, approval of the special use permit for Deborah, Campbell, and Mary's County, for the annual Teweska Christmas Ball, Saturday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-fourth, or seven and five. Use of shut-in on Sunday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty-fourth, AM, 1:00 PM, for setup. And then use of shut-in on Saturday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-fourth, AM, 10:00 PM, for setup. And then, and then use of shut-in on Sunday, December fifteenth, AM, 1:00 PM, for setup. And then use of shut-in on December sixteenth, Friday, and tonight, AM, for final cleanup. That's the motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. No discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. I'd be discussing interaction on approval of the special use permit for Cambridge, for annual Teweska Christmas tree lighting ceremony on Friday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-fourth, requesting the following. The use of, you know, with the West End section of Fifth Street, and Allen Street, starting at five-thirty, for counseling for the parents and sons, and, and toward the correction, saving the last period. And for, I'm sorry. Mayor White Tree, six blocks, that's the motion to approve. Motion approved. And I was saying, second on favor.
Aye.
On the period. I'd like to discuss interaction on the special use permit for Andrew, for annual money credit on Saturday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-fourth, requesting the following. Use of Allen Street, Sixth Street, Thirteenth Street, from four PM to six PM, for prayer started, speaking. And then use of Allen Street, from sixth to third, from six PM to eight PM, for light tree. That's the motion to approve.
Approved.
Second. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion. I have no discussion, no discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. I have no discussion interaction on the special use permit for Andrew, for annual Santa and Park on Saturday, December twenty-first, twenty twenty-fourth. Requesting the following, use of shut-in park, from four PM to eight PM, for children that can be stopped by the COVID, you know, vulnerable, Santa, and gifts, people for children. That's the motion to approve.
Approved.
And I was saying, second, and they're in discussion. No discussion, no discussion on favor.
Aye.
On the period. Motion made is second, and they're in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Woohoo, that's it. Have a pleasant evening.